Okay, I'm gonna call the order. The September 8th, 2025, 5:00 PM, Board of Trustees and planning special joint meeting for today. But please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor File.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasure Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hayward.
Here.
Trustee Morocco. Trustee Nalamothu.
Here.
Trustee Tetter.
Here.
And I will go ahead and do the Planning Commission. Member Billings.
Here.
Member Borscham.
Here.
Member Lomeyer.
Present.
Member Ritchie.
Here.
Member Scarborough.
Here.
And Member Sutcher.
Here.
We have a call.
Great, excellent. All right. Next, I would like to get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carrying. Are there, and I guess, you know what we'll do, just kind of, we'll just, when I say the board, we'll let you guys go first, if you would like, and then we'll bring it back up here. It's from that order from the board, okay? I know you're a commission, but, right now, is there any public announcements that the Planning Commission would like to make? No? Okay. I'll pull it up to the board. Is any public comments that the board would like to make? No? All right, this is easy so far. Any public announcements from the audience? No? All right. Anybody online? Nope? All right, I'm gonna close the public announcements and the public comments. Next, we're gonna go into the agenda items. And today's agenda is to have a discussion about the tree ordinance, as it was presented to the Board of Trustees, to go back through, look through it, and get a little bit better understanding. This is a discussion/ workshop, so the conversation, we're gonna be a little bit less formal than normal here, but if it starts to get a little unruly, where people are talking over, I will interject and let the person recognize individuals to speak. I did talk with the Chair of the Planning Commission, and one of the things that we agreed on was we would let the Carlisle Group come up and give a little presentation first and foremost. Once we go through that, then we can start opening up the dialogue a little bit more back and forth. Is there anybody who has any issues with that on the board or the commission? No? All right. Carlisle's quick.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm gonna kick things off and then turn it over to Megan. One of the things I'm going to discuss with the board is a little bit of the background about how we got to the point of presenting the ordinance that you had before you to the board. Megan's gonna actually discuss the specifics of that, but I would want to give a little background, because I actually started on it with the Planning Commission before Megan got involved. I will say that this has been an issue that has been discussed previously with the township. From my background, probably at least the third time that I know of in, you know, thirty or so, thirty or forty years. The recent discussion was really initially initiated by the Open Space Committee, that did present some ideas to the Planning Commission, in more or less an outline form of things that they thought could or should be included in a woodland's ordinance for consideration by the Planning Commission. From there, at that point in time, this was in the fall of 2023, Supervisor Aliaga asked us for a proposal to prepare, you know, to work with the Planning Commission in the preparation of an ordinance that would address the following. Review the current ordinance language, research the variety of tree and woodland ordinances that are out there, and preservation standards that have been used in other communities, provide a draft ordinance to the Planning Commission for review, revise an ordinance based on suggestions from the Planning Commission, and then prepare a final draft to the Planning Commission. So that was the process that we initially followed. But one of the first things that we did was provide the Planning Commission, I didn't provide them with exhausting, exhausted examples. What I tried to do was provide them with a range of options that, so other communities have tried. There were really multiple other experiences that I, excuse me, multiple other approaches that I could have presented to the Planning Commission, but I decided to confine it to several. The first was the City of Troy, which adopted a woodland protection ordinance, which was somewhat similar to the one that was presented to you, but they adopted in 2016, that it was primarily, it is applied to projects when a site plan is being submitted for development. But it does go farther in terms of the consequences of tree removal if that is done within a certain period of time before a site plan is submitted. So it does provide specific standards for tree replacement, including even off-site replacement. That's the City of Troy's. The Orninance Township takes a different, more restrictive approach by prohibiting tree removal without obtaining a permit, with some exceptions. So, for example, parcels of five acres or less are exempt unless they are currently considered for a site plan approval, again. So that's a distinction there in the fact that they do have a more restrictive approach in terms of tree removal without a permit. They also have tree replacement standards. And then the final ordinance example that we provided to them was Ann Arbor Township, which is a community that we work with, well, we work with all of these communities, but was a community we worked in the Ann Arbor area, and it's one of the ordinances that has been cited as an ordinance that addresses some of the issues that were raised in the Canton Township case, and the fact that in the manner in which it is applied has been held up as an example of something that's more legally defensible. It exempts parcels that are three acres or under. It does require tree survey and tree replacement, a plan when, again, submitting a site plan. So, the real, one of the real common denominators with many of these are that there is some punitive measures associated with tree removal without a permit under certain conditions, but there's also more restricted, or more, I want to say, the actual provisions for how you apply this ordinance comes under the idea of when a site plan is actually submitted. So, there is some penalty for tree removal without a permit, but the most of how these ordinances are implemented are when a site plan is submitted. And so I tried to give some examples of the different approaches. Now, as I said, there's probably dozens of other approaches. Many of them are copied or, you know, replicated from what other approaches have been done, but I just wanted to give a good range of ordinances for the Planning Commission's consideration. So the Planning Commission did take that in some of the discussion, and Megan will discuss with you what they did from there.
So, on March 27th, the Planning Commission had a special work session where they looked at two different approaches based on the things that they had looked at before that were brought forward by the Chair. One was an ordinance with an overlay, and so that meant that if you went that direction, you would look at all the trees at the time that were in the township, draw a line around them, and say anything within these areas where there are significant amount of trees, those areas are in this overlay, and you can't remove a tree without a permit. End story. There were some exceptions, and then they looked at a scenario where it was, all right, instead of using that overlay, it's whenever a property has to go through a site plan review, so that's any subdivisions, condos, PUDs, specialty uses, or something that's being developed as commercial, office, and industrial, all of that has to go through site plan. And they had a lot of elements of the Ann Arbor tree ordinance that Dick was mentioning because there was a replacement, a replacement ratio as well, if you were removing woodlands or if you were removing trees. And the Planning Commission decided that option was the best, that they wanted to go, do, was that the trigger is site plan review, but they had a lot of different opinions on definitions, the ratio of tree replacement, how to look back in the past if trees had been removed, and how to do that. And so, we worked, I think, two or three more Planning Commission meetings, and really two sets of different zoning amendments evolved. One was to, really just dealing with procedurals for site plans, so defining what a protected tree was, defining what a landmark tree is. Landmark trees are bigger, big, big trees rather than landmark tree would be something that's eight inches in width and diameter. And we went back and forth on a lot of those definitions and talked about them, and also what was a woodland, forested or canopy, what were the replacement ratios, things like that. But really, what they were looking at was, how do we define these, and then requiring them at conceptual site plan review instead of at preliminary, which is what you have in your ordinance now. So, they felt like they would get better information if it came in conceptual, and then also the developers would as well, and then they could look at those. So, those, and those were, and then coupled with that is in preliminary site plans, so when you see it for the final time, that, I mean, I'm sorry, preliminary site plan, you would get tree protection plans and tree protection measures. So then, the Planning Commission would know how these trees were supposed to be protected, that they were proposed to be preserved. And then they also changed the site plan standard, dealing with trees, to list these new definitions that they had put in of a protected tree, landmark tree, and the different woodlands. So that was ready to go, and everybody had agreed upon it, and that set of zoning ordinances was packaged up and recommended. At the same time, the Planning Commission was looking at, all right, once a site plan happens, what are we going to require a replacement? And that ended up, and they looked at that, and those were the amendments, the second set of amendments that came to you, that requiring tree replacements for trees or woodlands of a certain size when the site plan is required. And then also having a two-year look-back clause for exactly the situation that Dick was talking about, what happens when somebody removes trees without a permit, and now it comes from for site plan or clear cutting. Those all came to the board, and you had a discussion on those at a first reading, and that's led us to here as well. In between your first reading and it coming to, in the next Planning Commission meeting, we had been asked to look at, maybe there's an incentive-based approach that could happen, and we've put together some things that other townships have done to increase landscaping requirements while laying waivers for required landscaping when large trees or existing vegetation or woodlands are preserved, and also for residential, making the cluster development the easiest option for single-family residential development. And so, with the idea that those cluster developments preserve more trees and more environmental features than something that's not. So, I believe that that's the list of things that the Planning Commission went through and wanted to give you the history of options that they look at and chose and didn't choose to do.
Yeah. I want to just, one thing I do want to clarify, because I sensed at the board meeting that I attended, that there might be some difference in opinion or question about to what this ordinance, this proposed ordinance would have applied. And it would apply, obviously, to any type of commercial property that is being developed for which a site plan is required, but it would also be applied to residential property for which a site plan is required. So what does that mean? Well, it means that it does not apply to single-family home development on an individual lot, for example. That does not require a site plan. What does require a site plan is when you're gonna develop an entire area, as in most cases, it's a site condominium today. You don't see any subdivision plots hardly anymore, but that does require by ordinance anything that's proposed as a site condominium as a site plan. I think the other example that Megan made at that meeting is that it would not apply to when there's just simple land divisions, and we do have those occasionally, particularly up in the northwest part of the township, where you have ten-acre plots that are being divided down to the minimum three-acre lots, and that property could be developed, it does not, you know, if it's not, it does not come under the site plan requirements, it would not be applicable in this case. So I just, I wanted to make clear that particular distinction here. So I think really what we're, you know, hoping comes out of this meeting, Mr. Supervisor, is a discussion between the Planning Commission and the Township Board in terms of perhaps goals that you have that are mutually agreeable, some challenges or obstacles that you both see to the, some of the approaches that we've talked about, and really to give some clearer direction to the Planning Commission, how we either can move forward or do not move forward on this particular issue. I think that kind of frames what we're talking about here. So.
Questions? Comments?
Counselor. I just want to elaborate on the two different aspects, just to make sure everybody's clear. This may have been a presentation fault on the part of the Planning Commission. The ordinance that we presented to you could have been separated in two separate reports. One of them would be the site plan application, which is what they talked about, where we're basically changing the inventory requirement, if you want to call that, from being delivered at final site plan to it being delivered at conceptual with a little bit more detail. That could have been handled all by itself, and still could. Then the second phase was basically the penalty and replacement plan. So, is everybody clear on that?
No. So I thought, is there three? Because I thought there was a procedural one. There was then, you're saying there's, and then the second phase, which was the implementation aspect, are you saying there's two different timing elements of that?
I may have been simplifying the second one. The procedural one is the site plan submission requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I do recognize there was two different ones. Any other comments there before I bring you back up here? We're just gonna bounce back and forth.
Bill, I think, getting to your point, the one thing, I think you said that might be a little bit misleading, was the, there was no requirement to state what trees are on the plot, this is on a site plan for the final. It was only landscape requirements, you had to meet the landscape requirements. There wasn't, you didn't have to identify.
Under our proposed?
No. You said the difference between now and our new proposal, and our current proposal doesn't, you don't have to do a tree inventory, you just have to show that you meet the landscape requirements.
I believe the language in our current ordinance does give the Planning Commission the option to require a tree inventory at final site plan. Is that correct?
Well, it's actually required information.
Yeah, it's required information of trees five DBH or higher are required on final site plans.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
For better and worse, I don't think we always enforce it.
Yeah, yes, well, I mean, Bill, generally, we do, but it's also based upon, I mean, where there are scattered trees, we require there to be an inventory, but where you've had clusters of trees, we have not required an individual in an inventory within that particular area. So that, that has been consistently implied.
Okay.
It's just a matter of the level of detail when you have concentrated woodlands as to how much, so we don't require, we have not required a detailed inventory in that regard. Now, a lot of times, we get them anyway, but we don't, that is not always necessary when you are delineating where you have masses of woodland.
Did I clarify your point?
Yeah. I guess that's, again, I knew we, if they were keeping, like, a cluster of trees, we, they noted that on the site plan, it wasn't an inventory, is what I was getting at, so.
Okay. Well, do you guys want to have questions? Not I'll start, or you wanna start? You may.
I just, I think that my initial thing, what we do with the new ordinance that we're proposing would eliminate the need for doing individual tree inventories in areas that were proposed to be saved, so there's a savings that we're not, even if with the new ordinance we're proposing, you are not required to inventory every tree on the property. That's only after, which is the whole, so I guess I'm gonna take that back to the beginning, and I'm not gonna talk about the tree ordinance right now. I would, I know Bill was alluding to it. I think that two reasons why I think that we should address the two separate ordinances separately, the first one, the procedural one, because I think that going through that one first and getting the flavor of the board on the procedural one is gonna further the education of kind of what we were trying to do and the benefits and the tools that the Planning Commission hasn't had, but would like to have, but often did get, just because the developers are used to providing those things. I mean, even, I've got plans back in the 90s that had tree inventories on them. It's not uncommon that we required that, the parcel behind Tim Hortons, when that condominium was done, we had a full tree inventory on those plans back in 91. So, it's nothing new, but in my opinion, if we, if we, I think that for the benefit of everyone, if we focus on the benefits the Planning Commission would get by implementing the first ordinance amendment that we're requesting, the tools we need in the beginning of a process first, and then go to the second ordinance, I think would be, I had talked to Bill about this, I think that's the, I would recommend that's the approach we take today, is get the first one out of the way and then go to the second one. Procedurally first, that's gonna clear up a lot of stuff before we get to the second phase. This is my opinion, that's all I got right now. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I had a couple of questions for Dick, if he could come up. We had some concerns at the last meeting, and they were concerned about lawsuits, they brought up the Canton case. My question, I guess, is, would, I mean, you obviously go through a legal, before you, you're not gonna present us with an ordinance that you, we're gonna most likely get sued over, or you wouldn't be in business. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. That's just one, that's just one thing I wanted to, because there was a lot of, there was a couple of people that were concerned about that.
But we have not involved Mr. Kelly's office at this point yet, because we, I don't think we've had common ground in terms of exactly where we're, you know, what we're wanting to, wanting to proceed, but that is absolutely correct, and if Mr. Kelly said this is not a defensible approach, that would obviously be an issue.
Okay. And then, second, if you, do you happen to know what the cost of a tree inventory is? Roughly?
Oh, I don't, because it obviously varies on the size of the property.
Okay.
Now, would I say, is it, you know, is it an expense? Yes, of course it is, because generally, you know, you're, if you require, as Mr. Morocco was referring to, if we don't require individual tree inventory in areas where are intended to be saved, that saves a lot of money, because then they don't have to go have to individually identify and tag trees. So that's, that's clearly where that can be relatively expensive. Where you have to go out and individually identify and tag trees, and if you were to do that across an entire site, yeah, that would be a, that would be an expense, no question about it. Ironically, we do receive that, though, quite frequently, because many developers want to know that information before they start their, you know, to plan the site, but I can't say that we always get that detailed information. We do always, we've always gotten some kind of tree information. What this does is it removes any of the gray area, this alone just removes gray area from the ordinance, in terms of that particular current requirement of the site plan ordinance. And, I mean, just taken alone, it would support some of the other standards that are already considered by the Planning Commission, and you for that matter, in reviewing certain plans. So having clear information is, it would, it would be of a benefit to supporting other standards in the ordinance that we try to achieve.
Are you referring, are you referring to the definitions?
Well, no, I'm referring to the site plan reviews, the actual standards for site plans approval, because you, in, you know, there is language already in the ordinance talking about natural resource preservation and protection, about trees and being one of those things specifically that, you know, has been really important. So, having better information would really better support those goals.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. All right, I have some questions for you, so you can stay up there. Are you close, whatever? Oakland, Orion, and Ann Arbor, you brought up those three as examples of places that have tree ordinances. When were they implemented?
Oh, boy. Ann Arbor Township's been in place, we've been working with them for over 20 years, 25 years, and they've had a tree ordinance for that, all that period of time. Oakland, I mentioned that, we haven't been working with them for that long, but they've had a tree ordinance for at least, I think we've worked with them close to 20 years. Orion Township, the same thing, for that long. Troy's was implemented in 2016, and we helped them draft that ordinance.
At the time that the tree ordinance was implemented, do you happen to know the percentage of undeveloped commercial land at that time?
In those communities?
Yeah.
I do not.
So, I think I've shared with, I don't think, this should come as a surprise to anybody when I say this, is that, you know, as far as the procedural, breaking it out into one or two parts, I would actually like to take one step up higher and have whoever, I mean, this is a workshop to have open conversation around, why at this stage, when we only have 100, less than, or 100 acres or whatever left of commercial land left, do we now need to have a tree ordinance when we've been looking 109 acres, and this really hasn't been a systemic problem in this township, for whatever reason, good, bad, or ugly, whatever? Why now?
So, actually, it's a great question, Mr. Supervisor, and Chairman Scarborough and I were talking about this not that long ago, because when I looked at the minutes of the last board meeting involving this, I thought there was some difference of opinion as to whether it was needed. And this was already in process when I joined the Planning Commission, so I had to ask some very basic questions of those who were bringing it forward, right? Why do we need this? How often does this occur? Is an ordinance really the right way to go at it? And obviously, since we proposed it, the Commission came up with the mutual feeling that, yes, it was necessary, there's evidence, there's instances where this has happened, and this is our best tool to do it. But before we get into the mechanics of tearing into the ordinance and the wording and the strategy there, I think we should probably answer that question and feel comfortable as a board and a commission. We shouldn't do this just because Ann Arbor did this, or another community did this. A lot of communities do things that are not productive, but do we see enough instances that we're all on board that, yep, we need this, it will help us, and we need the tools for the Planning Commission to try and manage this or not? So, I'm not selling one way or the other, but I think the board needs to be of like mind, then we can get into what's the right mechanics and wordage in the ordinance. So, I'm glad you brought that up, because we do have a very large percentage of our township that's already developed, and the thing that was concerning to me that I wanted to make sure was covered was, we didn't inordinately burden homeowners and property owners that, you know, that need to do inventories to split a piece of property, for instance. I think we've done a good job of that. The look back, I'm not a big fan of, will be reduced, the requirements on developers, I don't think are extreme, but I'd like to settle your question first, and that's figure out if as a board and a commission we're in agreement that we need to do this, then we can all move forward with the right way to deal with this.
Yeah, okay. So I'm sitting here looking, and I see that Yeah, okay. So, I'm sitting here looking, and I see that we have, where's it, you know, greater than, let's go with the five acres, right? Because that was one of the things. If we look at the five acre parcels, we have seven left, excluding the two hospital pieces, which pretty much been clear cut already, but there wasn't much trees there. So, we're going through this exercise for seven parcels. It seems like we're late to the game, right? Most of them came about 20 years ago. It looks like we're going to create something that I don't know if we necessarily need.
You're, you're referring to just commercially zoned properties?
Right, I am at this point, yes.
Just for clarification, okay.
Yep.
You know what I'm going to say. I, I take exception with you focusing strictly on commercial. Residential developers are the biggest offenders of this. They do the biggest parcels of land. They have the ability because they clear, they need smaller footprints for their improvements. Back when I was a kid, it was very common for developers to build quality, more custom type homes. Today, we're in a period where people, the developers, cost efficiency, they want to do these clear cut things, or cookie cutter things. And they want everyone to look as similar as the other. It's a lot, and they're cost efficient, they're much more focused on clearing the land and minimizing their costs. And so I think that's a trend, and I, maybe Dick can comment on that. It's a trend I see. And as, as I've, you've heard me say, my career was in finance. I did a lot of real estate development financing. So I have paid attention to development for a good number of years. I am nowhere near an expert, but, so I think that's a trend. I look at this canopy cover, and I even question that, because there are parcels that back up to Oak Hill Road that are long narrow parcels, 10 acres plus or minus, that according to this, they have no trees on them. But when I go on the Oakland County GIS map, or I even go on Google Maps from the satellite, there's trees there. And if somebody could buy five or six of those parcels and gather them up and develop, and they could clear cut it. And what I don't want to happen is I don't want a developer coming to the planning commission with a 40 acre parcel that's already been clear cut. Because trees, to me, are like a natural resource. They're for the common good. They help all of us. It's not just the air and the water and everything. It's a common occurrence, when you clear cut a piece of property, it's a common occurrence that there's flooding on the parcel next door, because it affects the drainage. The root system, trees, everything, they absorb water. And then you add everything else they do to the environment. I look at them as a common good. Now, there's a balance. I agree. I'm not going to tell somebody they can't cut down their trees, because I want my trees there. I want your trees there to help me. But I think it helps our community if the planning commission has some control over that. And that's why I think it's more than just, what'd you say, five parcels?
Seven. So with that, seven parcels, would you say that if it was just down to seven parcels on residential, this would be an ordinance that's not needed at this stage of the game?
If you could convince me that it applies to just seven, I would entertain that.
Okay. So, for commercial, we don't need this for commercial then? Because it is seven?
I'd, I'd like to see which ones you're looking at. And I, you know, I look, I look at, look at the town center areas. Look at our target, our overlay areas, Sashabah, Dixie, White Lake. I see parcels in there that I think if we woke up one day and they were clear cut, our community would be up in anger. There, there was that parcel off of, what's the road down there by Arby's?
Flemings Lake?
Flemings Lake. West of Flemings Lake that was just clear cut. I've heard complaints about that. And it's not that noticeable from Sashabah, but a little inconspicuous parcel like that. There, there's a lot of trees along Sashabah between 75 and Clarkston Roads. And I could say the same for M15. I could say White Lake Road, Dixie Highway, the North End. If they get clear cut, I think our community, I think it's worth saving.
So, what about a situation where, and this happened, and we're in Rose Township, where we have our property, but we had a lumber company come in and offer to cut the trees down, and they paid us a pretty healthy amount of money. Are you saying that because it's a community, you treat it or view it as a community property, that I shouldn't have been able to do that? Or, and I, I'll just make it rhetorical. The other side of it would be also is, you know, I don't see anybody coming in over to help me cut my tree limbs and branches and all that stuff when the trees fallen down, or diseased, or anything else like that. Matter of fact, my HOA sends me a nasty letter saying, get it taken care of. So, I guess what I'm struggling with, with your comment about you see it as a community good, I don't disagree. It does benefit the township and residents and everything else, but that doesn't give them authority over it. And that's where I have the issue on the residential side, as I've stated many times, is that I don't believe the township should be in the business of managing what is privately owned on private property.
To go back to your Rose Township.
Yeah.
I understand the lumbering industry, though. I think the lumbering industry, aren't they restricted that they, they can't just clear cut? They have to take a certain percentage of the trees and leave the rest?
So, okay, in all fairness to that, and that, I don't know, I don't know the exact answer. I know they came in, they were very picky about the trees they wanted. So I don't know if that was a, because of there's an ordinance or something like that, or if it was just really because of the trees they had. We had a bunch of swamp trees, right? So, they didn't really want those anyways. They want more of the hardwoods instead of the softwoods. But at the same token, they could have cut down a monument tree, in which case now that would have been a problem under this. So, where does government stop and private start?
I would say it wouldn't have been a problem under that, because that wasn't, there was no site plan application.
Right.
Okay. But what happens now, if I turn around and we sell the 500 acres to a developer, and they come back and say, well, last year you cut these trees down, now it's a two year look back, and now I'm getting hammered?
So, let's take the two year look back, Gavin.
Well, if I could comment, it's, it's a mistake to view this as a tree preservation for the townshipwide. Whether it's five lots or 20 lots, the vast majority of trees will not be controlled by this. Residential property owners are still going to be able to cut trees down if they want. So I don't, I don't want to give the illusion, Jim Beppe spoke at one of our meetings and made a very good point about this, if you're really trying to preserve trees, this wouldn't be restricted to a site plan. This is a site plan control, developer control mechanism, the way we have drafted it. I just, we shouldn't be on any, under any illusions. If you've got five acres and you want to cut all your trees down, this isn't going to affect that.
Until you try to go and sell-
Yeah. So I just, I want, nobody to be under a misperception that this is dedicated to preserving all of the trees in the best township, because it won't. That's not the way it's written. It's a development control, developer control mechanism to keep ideally from clear cutting when a, when a development comes in. So at least, we should all be honest about that. That's, that's what it is. There is an altruistic benefit, that trees are a valuable resource, but it's only going to protect them in this scope.
So, the difference I see is, in your situation and clear cutting, if you, if my neighbor with 10 acres clear cut all their property, it's not going to have a huge impact on me, because there's nothing happening on that property. It's just his private property.
You might not like it.
I might, well, I might not like the fact I lost some shade, but I'm not going to have a negative impact. And what the tree preserve, what we're trying to do is control that. So, the property across the street, had we done, put a little more effort into buffering the highway, the people in Lake Walden and Spring Lake and all them wouldn't be hearing the highway. And it can be as simple as that. Doesn't mean it would have changed the density over there, or the amount of money they could have made, but we would have had more, we would have been able, now we've seen what that does. That's why I don't care if it's one property or 100 properties. All it is, is two times through the board you vote on, and it's done. It's not like we're going to put a bunch of million hours into this thing. But, the property that they cut on Flemings Lake Road, just maliciously to cut it for no reason, now the sound is going all the way over to Wingate or whatever that property is over on Clarkston Road. Look at the property on North Sashabah, where there's a wall of woods from Flemings Lake Road to Monarch. The design plan for the master plan in that area is not to put the buildings by the road like the rest of Sashabah corridors, to put it back off the road, so you could leave a woodland in the front. I think the misconception is that somehow cutting trees down saves money, and clear cutting saves the developer money. And somehow, this is all about the developer not being hindered from making money, but research that Dave's done and other people have done prove that trees do have a monetary value to the person. It doesn't mean your property's going to be worth less, you know, if you, if you don't. And it gives us the ability, and we've said, and I think the planning commission have been very clear, that we're not talking about reducing density or doing things like that. We actually would encourage smaller lots and clustering if you could protect the impact of the surrounding property. So, L, seven properties, 10 properties, 15 properties, those will have an impact on their neighbors. And if we can minimize that by controlling what trees stay, then rewarding the developer for good behavior by smaller lots, or a density bonus, or the ability to cluster to save on the infrastructure, which is basically what the goal of that is. So the houses are smaller, there's less gas, less electric, less paving, and more buffering. And that's what, that's what this is about, is the ability to minimize the impact, not the money, not the profits, not even the density, but to have the tools to design the site in a way that visually, we don't see the additional density if we don't need to, and to protect the impact on the neighboring properties. And we don't have those tools right now. And that's where the, you know, that's, that to me has always been what this is about, is giving us the tools to make a better development, which in turn, now we've learned some lessons, will have less negative impact on the other residents. I, we're talking about make believe properties that need to be clear cut in order for them to be profitable. Well, if they're flat pieces of property, there's no benefit. I built lots of neighborhoods where the developer went in, cut all the trees down, created all the subdivision lots, and then the resident got to pick which trees came down on their individual properties. It was, even with topography, there was no reason to just wipe it all out to save money. I just don't think that anyone's ever made the argument that it's going to, developers will make less if we allow them to just clear cut at will. I, I haven't heard that, I haven't heard that, that argument be made correctly, in my opinion. So that's why I think it's important, one parcel or, or two. We have zero control right now of what a developer can do on their property and the impacts of the residents. And preservation of trees is way more beneficial and way less costly to the developer than revegetation and landscaping, which doesn't work as well. So, we've got it-
This is the level of discussion I thought we needed to have.
We've got it in our ordinance, that we, you don't have to label all the trees to save money if you're going to save them. If, that's why if you come in at conceptual and sit down with us, we can say, listen, put a little extra by the, you know, trees, and we'll let you go down the 50 foot wide lots, you know, if you, if you do this, if you do this, you know. When there's nothing left, and we had this discussion, Chuck, you know, Supervisor, about the last guy that came in with the thing, it's like, everyone needs something. You're going to need the cluster option, a PUD, a PRO, you're going to need something, because none of, nothing's zoned for what people want to do, even a neighborhood. The trees are what you have to, to, to work with us to get your development. When they're gone, there's not going to be anything to negotiate with, why we would rezone for you to put in that kind of density. So, I just think it's got a bad rap, because it's not fully understood, but it doesn't mean that it makes the developer less money. And in fact, I think there's people that can make arguments that wooded lots are more valuable to a developer. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a problem?
Just on the, on the Flemings Lake Road property, and I don't know how many of the board or the commission looks back at the Oakland County GIS maps. That's the lot. There's almost no trees on it. This is 19 years ago. There was a farm field, I mean, there's a lot of property here that was a farm field. Make sure it's still the same thing. Yep. So right in the middle of the screen there, that's that, whatever is it, 30 acres or whatever it was. There was a lot, unless, unless landmark and monument trees can grow in 19 years, they weren't there. And so there was a lot of just kind of the junk trees that go on property when people stopped caring for it. The looks of this would indicate to me someone had a brush hog, and they were cutting those fields on a regular basis. Because I can go back and forth. As I, as I go forward on this screen, from year to year, you suddenly see there becomes a canopy, but it's not, it's not the kind of trees we believe are the ones that are worth keeping. And so I know there's a lot of anger from people that gets driven up by driving by saying, oh, they cut everything down. And there's no question, they cut down some big oaks. I saw them. But it's probably 15, I could probably count them, because you can see them here. They didn't grow in 19 years to be, you know, 18 inches or whatever they were. Because there were some pretty good sized ones, and I think we see them in the picture. I just wanted to kind of show that, because there's, there's, there's importance in saving trees, but I don't want people to become outraged over somebody clear cutting what was a farm field less than 20 years ago. I'd like to save all the oak trees and everything we could. My other fear, and I've pointed this out before, we've had a couple. This is one of them. There's some property on that 15 that's been clear cut. And my fear is, the more we talk about restricting people's rights to cut down trees, and talk about putting in a tree ordinance, what percentage of the existing commercial property are they just going to go in there and, and cut it down before we pass an ordinance out of fear, rightful or wrongful fear? Because like I said, it's happened here, and it happened on M15. What percentage of this commercial property, this is commercial, so what percentage of what's even left has been knocked down just in the last four or five months? And that's just something I fear. Talk, we've talked more and more about it versus just engaging with the property owners to try and find mutual ground, especially when there's so few property owners. Seems to me, we could, we could call all the property owners on the commercial and the large, the really large residential properties, and go get with them and say, look, we want to let you know, we're going to give you a lot of benefit from saving trees. Because that's a way to go in and try and have a win-win, versus saying, we're going to, what they hear, we're going to take away your right to cut down these trees before we give you permission. And I, I'm fearful of that, and it's already happening. That's all I have.
We're not doing the audits?
I don't know. I don't know if the board-
That was 19 years ago, that picture?
It's in the middle, 19 years ago, yeah. It's 2006, on the county's website.
I've got it right here from 23. It looks like a pretty good, pretty well wooded parcel.
Yeah, it was.
Yes. I, I pointed that out. But Monarch and Landmark trees didn't grow in 19 years. There were lots of trees on there that are just scrub trees. Unless someone wants to tell me that, that, that oak tree's going to grow, you know, to that size in 19 years.
Paul, if I may, I don't think we're talking about species. We're talking about density and privacy and the canopy. I don't know that the planning commission ever was concerned about what the species of tree was as far as more of the canopy and clustering of the trees. Yes, there's Monarch trees in this tree, but if you have a, I mean, I know in 20 years, if you have a wooded lot, whether it's sycamore trees, or ash trees, or oak trees, it's still a dense woodland canopy that has a benefit to the density of the trees. It's not whether or not we saved a few oaks or not, you know, in my opinion. It's, it's, it's the whole woods, the vines, everything, the opaqueness, the, the sound barrier, you know, all of that. It's beneficial.
I'm going to go back to, again, the, yeah, commercial, I don't care. Like I said, I don't care about the commercial site. They're all smart. They'll figure out how to make money. I'm not worried about them. I'm worried about the fact that we're infringing on private property rights of the residents who suddenly say, we, we're going to come in and we're going to create something that there hasn't been a huge issue for. And so, actually, just to, and I, I'm going to put them on the spot for a second. Brian, do you happen to know, and you can just say yes or no real quick, do you happen to know how many PRDs have resulted in clear cutting in the last 20 years?
PRD?
Yeah.
Is one.
One, okay. How many PRDs have their bed?
Two.
Two. So 50%. That's not, all right, Brian, I didn't know the answer either, so.
Eagle Ridge.
Eagle Ridge? Yeah, well, Eagle Ridge. Eagle Ridge? Yeah, well, Eagle Ridge.
Keeps coming back.
How, how many acres were they?
Yeah.
Two hundred and...
Well, Oakhurst was over six hundred acres. And Morgan Lake is...
Three hundred maybe?
Three hundred and, yeah, I mean, all told, it was over three hundred and twenty. Because it did include some areas on the opposite side of Maybe Road. So you, I don't know if you were referring to PRDs or PUDs because...
PRDs, so I was gonna start with, I was talking about the residential, I think.
Yeah, well, we also have residential PUDs.
Okay, so how many residential PUDs?
Twenty maybe, you know.
How many?
Twenty.
That have been...
Have been clear cut.
Okay.
Uh, no, no, I wouldn't say that, 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 I would not say that that has been common for clear cutting of PUDs, with some exceptions, of course. There has been.
And since you're standing there, and it might not be fair to ask you this question, but trustee Morocco made a statement about the species, and I can't find it at this moment, but I thought there was something in here regarding the species of the trees.
They have the list.
Yeah, in the inventory, yeah.
Okay, but there was a reason for the listing of the species of the trees. If it was just a canopy, we wouldn't care about the species. So what's the intent by having them list the species?
The intent of having them listed by the species is that there are certain species that wouldn't count towards preservation or the ordinance says are fine to be removed when they're invasive or like a box elder, when they are prone to disease like an elm. Also in that inventory would be the health of the tree. And so a tree that was diseased or unhealthy could be cut down and not have a replacement requirement associated with it.
Okay, so the comment where we didn't care about the species was not a hundred percent accurate? Because you just said that if it was a elderwood or, you know, invasive.
I would say from the intent of the ordinance and some of the mechanics of it, no, because there was exceptions for that. I can't speak for trustee Morocco or some of the other planning commissioners and what they thought at the time.
I mean, I think what, I mean, the sense of what I got, speak for himself, but that where, you know, where there were clusters of trees regardless of their species that served a beneficial purpose, I think that the commission was thinking that there should be a benefit for preserving those. But, you know, generally, you know, we don't, we would not encourage the preservation of invasive species. As we know, this township's had, actually had an effort to try to remove a non, and we would encourage the replanting of more native type species plants because they do provide a higher benefit from that standpoint.
Okay, so I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe for the planning commission. If that lot, let's say the one that we just talked about though with the Flemings, if that was all full of invasive trees, even though it does provide a sound barrier, would you, would, and it cuts, everything comes to you guys basically first, right? Would you guys be in the position of saying that you have to preserve it? Or would you say, nope, you know, even if it's just packed with this invasive species or less desirable, whatever, you're, you're, you're free to cut them all down? Whoever.
If it meets the definition of invasive, and I believe our ordinance defined invasive as referenced in some state document or something like that, if it meets that definition, then we would not be allowed to require him to preserve it.
I, I don't know if I, I'm gonna expand on that if I can. Using the example of the lot you're talking about, whether they're invasive or not, same with, with Monarch, we didn't, we asked them to leave fifty percent of a natural buffer, whether it be invasive vines, pines, bushes, thicket, whatever, as the natural buffer. So there's a value in natural buffering, whether the trees are of value or not. And those, in fact, we wouldn't, we would say, all right, so say you've got a property against I-75. We'd say, we don't. Had we done that across the street and said, you just can't cut a hundred feet of whatever it is that's there, just, it's sound protection, it's noise protection, it's light protection, just leave it. That's what, there wouldn't be any tree inventory needed, but that would be the value. We wouldn't get into which trees are in that canopy or in that cluster. Megan, would you agree that's an accurate statement? So we're kind of not into this, that's why I'm saying the species. Now, when Monarch built their development, just give me one second, there were signature trees that they put retaining walls around in these fifty-foot oaks and that were identified that, hey, those would be okay to save. But around the perimeter of the property, we did not look at the species of trees or the quality, just the density of the natural vegetation itself was what we were asking them to preserve.
So to trustee Morocco's inquiry, one of the things was there is a wooded canopy and a forested canopy. And then within those canopies, we didn't require that there be a tree survey within those in terms of the health. So there was some, just if it's a large canopy, there was some value to that, that the planning commission felt that that should be preserved or, and replaced in the second part of the amendments that went towards you. If you are really interested in preserving a vegetated buffer, probably what would be better than a replacement ordinance would be to change your landscaping requirements to allow that buffer or require a vegetated buffer, and then you waive landscaping requirements when that buffer is preserved. So instead of having street trees down Dixie Highway at the northern point, rather to say, to change that language, so it says, the first twenty feet is a bed, is if you preserve all the existing vegetation there and it covers fifty percent of the area, then that counts towards your front yard landscaping and stop.
That's a significant savings to the developer to not have to burn, buy trees, maintain them, keep their bond held, and then go back and vegetate. So we, we did have a lot of discussions about how we could soften that blow for them. And done correctly, you could get away with very little revegetation and the cost of new vegetation by just going natural to the developer.
Just to clarify, I'm making this, this is the kind of conversation I wanted to have. I think the example that we're giving here is prior to this, right? So your question of, so what happened there, sorry, what happened in that instance? This was all the normal give and take of the planning commission and the site review, right? Can we, can you do this for us? Can you, there's, there was no ordinance of this nature in place to do that, right? So there is, there are tools available today. What you can't do is have them bring back something they went and clear cut before. So that's, that's what we're really looking at, is if they had come and said, we already took them all down, you've got limited ability if you don't have some, some teeth in that ordinance. But that's part of the normal give and take. So we're getting back to the, do we need a tool? And I can give you plenty of examples in the past of developers who've behaved badly, but that was in the past. And I would expect you could see the same behavior, but we don't have the large tracts, as you pointed out before. So it's one thing to say, looking over our shoulders, we've had this demonstrated to be a problem, but how much of a problem is it gonna be going into the future when we don't have those massive, those massive tracts? But we still have tools even without this to try and negotiate with a, with a developer when they come into the planning commission with their site plan. We, we do have some ability. This would be another level of strength. So that's really what it comes down to. And again, back to the question of, do we think we need this? Is it gonna be an ongoing problem? And is this the right tool to use? We may think we need to have some more teeth in, in to be able to manage this and use a different tool. I for one am open to that, but you know, there's a, there's a limited number of things in our toolbox. So if somebody has a better idea, I'm all for it. This, I'm a little concerned about the complexity of managing this from a planning commission standpoint and people thinking that we've administered it differently if it were to pass, right? So that's another issue.
Can we back up to the site plan application question? And let's see if we can get an agreement on one thing. Can you guys buy into the concept of giving the planning commission the opportunity to get better information at the conceptual site plan process rather than the final? Because by the time you get to the final, developers already put a good bit of money and design into his project. So we need to be able to get that information in conceptual so that we can guide him and help him so that he can further fine tune his project and get it to the final stage. That's why we wanted it at conceptual.
I have a question on how strict you wanna be at that conceptual. Because I'm gonna be honest, I'm totally against this. I have no problem with the conversation coming ahead of time with the conceptual thing that you guys talk it over. But if your, your stuff you want at conception, I don't know if that's the right word, probably not, is a strict thing to live by right off the bat? And there's no back and forth or let's, I mean, if, if, oh, oh, he's still there. See, I'm gonna need to see you. Trustee Morocco was talking about the one property with the fifty percent vegetation. It wasn't strict on what that included. If you're gonna be more open to be like, we're looking at X, Y, Z and talk it through and see what's on that property, I don't have a problem with it being early. But if you're trying to just make something like this come at the early stage and what you're asking for ahead of time has all these things attached to it before there's any discussion, I, I think talking to them like this is great. And maybe it is, you have to set a meeting with the planning commission before X, Y, Z happens. Instead of just a bunch of rules written on paper.
I would, if I may, I would like to defer to Megan, I think I know the answer to that, but I think... If all we had was the site plan submission requirements, how would that be handled?
So if all you had at site plan requirement, it would be that at conceptual, they would need to do a tree survey that's been done by a registered arborist that would document for individual trees, eight inches in diameter at breast height or larger, their species, health, and size. And then for woodlands, which are quarter acre to larger, it would need to just document their outline and generally say what types of trees are in there. And that's the type of information the planning commission is in, the changes to sections 202 and 605 in the ordinances that came to you. And then they would be asking for more information at final about, if you're proposing to preserve trees, basically tell us how and what mechanisms you're gonna use so those could be inspected.
I guess my further question to that is, if this inventory you're getting by most people anyway is happening, I...
It's happening...
Just, just 'cause we're writing it on this, now it seems like...
Zoe, you're getting...
You're getting it anyway, it sounded like, from the developers per Mr. Carlyle. It's just part of what they do.
We're not getting it all of the time.
Not all the time. We have been, we have gotten detailed tree inventories, but it's not technically, it's not part of the ordinance. And I will say, I will qualify this is that in response to what you were saying, trustee, this does have a provision in here that would allow this requirement for the tree survey to be waived by the planning commission in those instances where the topographic survey and/or other information provided by the applicant demonstrates that the nature of the site would not be, would not, you know, doing a tree inventory would serve no practical purpose. So there is, there is some flexibility there that would have, that would come as a result of discussion. And I know that from our standpoint, we have supported in many cases circumstances where more detailed tree implementation is not necessary or not warranted because it would really serve no beneficial purpose towards this, you know, towards, you know, towards the preparation of the site plan. So there is, there is that language, and it can always be massaged so that it's more clear. But all this was, all this is intended to do is clarify the, the actual tree information that the planning commission gets from what it currently says in the ordinance, but also require it to be presented earlier in the process rather than later. So it does foster a potential for discussion.
Terry, you're...
I've got one.
Okay.
I personally reviewed every site plan application with Ardmore, Northridge, Pine Visita, and Walden. We did not get a tree inventory on many of those. Walden had canopies, but we did not have detailed tree inventories.
Did you ask for it? Was it asked for?
I wasn't involved.
I know, you weren't, but was it asked for and just not given?
Don't know.
I think that's, that's the point, right? I think that's probably the point. Like, we, we've had a subcommittee that we've kind of looked through commercial and residential areas, and we found that, you know, in our opinion, if, if you see this stuff early enough, you can say, hey, you know, we would encourage you to leave those alone, maybe develop around them. But we don't have that choice because by the time we get to see it, the guy's already spent, you know, I don't know how much it costs to make a plan. He's already developed it in, on paper, and then he's giving it to us. And so we've already kind of, they've already overshot it. They paid for money to develop the plan. If we get the plan earlier with the trees, at least it gives us an idea of, hey, this is a really good benefit. We would encourage you to just try to keep it, but we just lose the opportunities to look at it.
Judge Rob?
Northridge is interesting because, as I've gone home the last few weeks driving by there, I, you know, at regular speed, I keep thinking, you know, where'd the neighborhood go? You can hardly see back in there.
Agreed. We, we agree.
Landscaping's been done great. I think maybe they, and I, again, maybe they sacrificed some of the internal trees to have larger buffers around the property. But that, so that was a project that was well put together by the planning commission quite clearly. The people that lived there, I talked to them, and they loved their community. Monarch Grove was done, again, this is all done without a tree ordinance. Monarch Grove, huge buffers around it, a lot of planning with it. We, we have a lot of people that come in and wanna do developments here who after the first meeting, bye-bye, right? That happens, right?
More times than not.
So now we're gonna tell them, you're gonna, you're gonna do a tree inventory before you get to this meeting, and then we're saying bye-bye. I'm just questioning how that makes sense. And I don't know how it's gonna save time if they do a tree inventory and come to the same meeting they were gonna come to anyways with their drawings? And then, and then we tell them redo the whole thing after we get the trees? Because even if they've already done the tree, they still put the money into the drafts already. It'd almost be like we wanna tell them to come in, walk the property with us to look at the trees, and then we'll tell you exactly how you can lay it out to save the trees. Otherwise, they're spending that money anyway, and I don't know what percentage of time we send people away the first time anyways, but we send people away. Now, let's say we, somebody comes to mom and pop, whoever with forty acres, and the developer goes to them, they didn't buy it, but they got some kind of an agreement or a purchase agreement depending on certain things. They go through the process and get the tree, the tree inventory. They come before the planning commission, not even before the planning commission, it's at the pre, the pre-con meeting. And basically they're said, yeah, this is not gonna work for us. Two years later, somebody else comes in and wants to do the same thing. We're gonna get a new tree inventory, I'm assuming, because stuff could grow and it could change and stuff might not be there. And so it just seems like it's an awful lot to put it up front like that when we're sending people away. And again, I'm a little bit hindered because I don't know what it costs to hire an arborist to put together this report. So maybe it's not even a significant amount of money. But I think that would be helpful to know that.
Yeah, the P2 meeting is before the conceptual, right?
Yes.
So I think that's where, you know, maybe there's some misunderstanding, but I think the P2 committee meeting's really great because that, that gives us the opportunity as a township to say, hey, we think this is gonna, this is gonna work where you, where you wanna put this new gas station. Maybe it won't work, right?
A gas station now?
Exactly. And that's how it worked. We looked at a new gas station, said, you know what, we probably don't need another gas station here. So that, that gives us the ability to tell the developer, you probably don't wanna spend another fifty grand redeveloping this site for a gas station 'cause we don't really want a gas station. But with Northridge and with Monarch, those are good builders, those are good developers. They did a great job. We, those are our conclusions too. Those are the things that we liked about it. They're set back deep, they have tons of trees. So the ordinance and the law isn't made for someone that keeps it. It's made for someone to prevent them from breaking it, right? So the guys that we, the bad characters, the bad actors, we wanna, you know, put a mechanism in so that, you know, if there's a chance to keep and preserve something beautiful, we can do that, right?
And I, and I get that, but it's the, it's the idea that there's not that much left that we're trying to protect.
So let's just give up on the rest?
I haven't given up on anything, but a good job is being done. A good job is being done and for me, we're doing a good job with, the planning commission is doing a good job overall with these projects. And they're doing it with what I, without doing what I see as a potential infringement on the property rights of township residents. Because I have a real problem with, with government getting too big. And, and I know that the government already tells people a lot of stuff they can and can't do. Yes, you can't put a shed on your property there. You can't build so close to the lake. You, you can't build on a 65 foot lot on a lake. We do, we do, you can't, you know, put your electric in without getting permission. A lot of that's safety related, but government already does a lot to tell people what to do. I have a struggle trying to come out with more about telling people, you can't cut down your trees unless we give you permission. I just, it's, it's really tough for me on that, so.
Just to throw in the other risk with that is a bad actor is going to be a bad actor. So the other risk here is that if it's a two-year look back period and you had someone sitting on a piece of property, the other incentive they might have is whatever we want to do, let's cut the trees before we. We're two years out, right? Then you cause the very thing we want to prevent. So people that misbehave are going to misbehave.
You can't stop them.
All right. And I don't want to take it, I don't think it's about as much misbehaving as the opportunity we have. You know, of course, everyone is, most communities have tree ordinances for a reason, is to protect the character of the community. The people we're talking about, again, I'm going to say it, are here to profit from us. The only people this affects is people here to profit, not to live. Now you could be the person that owns the land and you think some, for some reason, because you don't know anything about development, that you're going to get more value because you're going to clear cut. That doesn't mean that that's true. But we do, that meeting we have with everybody, the pre-con meeting. That's well before the conceptual and tree inventories would be needed just for that reason. And, you know, we've put a lot of effort, maybe not this recent last couple of boards, but back in the day on. The Greenways Plan and Animal Movements and Connectivity of the Woodlands and all of that. And all of that is what is supposed to be, if you do it right. Discussed at that pre-con meeting in the very beginning. So we, we need you to save that woodland because it connects the power lines over off of Pine Knob and Stick Knee to, you know, to the park, you know, to the Oakland County Park. That's what this is about, is giving us the ability to manage the development to the best of everyone's ability. Doesn't mean less money or less lots or less density. It just means put, you know, let's have, let's try to encourage people to have this conversation. You're going to cut, if someone's going to put a commercial building in the middle of a piece of property, all those trees are gone. We know that. Could you say, we're not going to, you know, there's nothing you can do about that. But could you save the cost of revegetation by buffering? Could you make the impact less? Could you keep the streetscape better? Could you save the character of the corridor? Could you do all those things? That's, you know, that's really what, in my opinion, this is. And we're giving them every opportunity. These pre-con meetings are great. Because again, you still got to qualify to get some sort of benefit from us to allow you to build these subdivisions. You're not going to just assemble a bunch of lots and go throw subdivisions in. If it's zoned R1R, it's three acre minimum. You're going to want 100 foot wide lots, so there you go. Now you've got to deal with us, but we need to have the tools to deal with it. I think that's all this really does. It's, it's not going to affect the property values as well as it's going to protect the residents and the character of the community. And we've seen what happens when you don't do that, you know, so I, I think that. A lot of thought and effort's been put into this and a lot of people that with a lot of knowledge, Dick and Megan, and they're not proposing ordinances that don't comply. Whatever happened in Canton, everybody took notice and changed whatever it was they did. Nobody's doing that anymore. So that's a moot point, you know. They're not going to put us in harm's way. Planning commissioners for years have been talking about it. People with certifications and backing and history have been talking about it, so they're, you know. It didn't get that far by accident. And we infringe on lots of property rights for the benefits of others. This is just one. If you want to say it's a property right encroachment, it's for the benefit of the community is why we're doing it. My opinion.
I've talked to a number of developers. One of them is a guy that develops what I call track housing. It's not really track, but that's what I call it. And I just asked him, what do you think about tree preservation ordinance? They, they plan for it. They anticipate, they're, they're so prevalent that they anticipate the communities that they go into are going to have. And they readily accept it. Do they like it? Probably not.
Well, then again, it goes back to, you know. I'm still, my question hasn't been answered yet. Why should we have this at all? You got seven pieces of the commercial. I don't like it on residential at all. And so if you're looking at the commercial, we basically agreed and Bill, I don't think you would say you agreed, but you, you were, I think you said, I want to know what those seven pieces are. But it seems like an ordinance for this doesn't seem worthwhile at this point. You know, I've always said, it seems like we're 20 years late for this and thank God that we were lucky that, you know, things went the way they did. You know, we had very little abuse on this side of things with this. And I'm still struggling with, if we wanted to sit there and say, we want to beef up the buffer zones and all the commercial and, you know, bigger setbacks and have more power there. What tool do we not have that allows us to do that today? I think with the PUD, we have all the ability to do that if we wanted to. The one thing that I think I hear that. Why you, those are there for this tree ordinance are in favor of it, it's a timing issue. You know, the one thing that I haven't heard a solution for is how do we prevent someone going and clear cutting, then coming and asking for the site plan approval? Right? So, you know, nothing that we've talked about, I've heard from our side or the counter side, which, you know, if you want to say I'm on the opposite side. I haven't heard a solution to deal with that particular issue yet. Is there a way to deal with that? I don't know. I mean, that's kind of the reason why we're having this workshop and my, for me anyways is, you know, is there something we can do on that timing? Because I'm concerned if you look at that look back, and I heard, I heard somebody say, let's take it out. What happens if I clear cut the land, I sell it to someone else and then six months later they sell it to a developer? Who pays it? Who, who gets hit? I mean, you got the look back, but it's changed hands twice already or three times. I mean, that gets very complicated to try to figure out and understand. I think there's a lot of nuances and a lot of different things here that just makes me very concerned about that part of things.
Well, you said something about what tools do we have? The tool we don't have to even begin to think about this right now is getting that info at conceptual site plan. By the time we get it at final, it's too late.
Let me ask you this question. I hear you. Sorry, I did interrupt. What, I know that at least for when I sit on the pre-cons, right, because I'm the one who put those together. So, and the idea was to deal with a lot of the stuff we're dealing with here. But I, you know, maybe Brian or somebody else who sits on those meetings, Sam or whoever. I think with very rare exception, I can think of two. The people that came in didn't own the land already. I can only think of two times that the person had already bought the land before they came to us. So again, if we're talking that, and you're talking about development like this. I don't think they're going to be coming in, buying the land and hoping to be able to do something with it without talking to us first. Now, I wasn't here for part of the history, so even if we take that, that mess across the street, the way it sounds like it played out. I wasn't here, so I don't know all the history. Did they own the property before they came and presented a conceptual site plan? Or did they give this conceptual site plan first and then buy the property?
I think that there's two, there's two topics, right? The P two is before the conceptual.
Yes.
So they wouldn't be, we're not asking for them to bring a tree survey to the P two meeting. That's the meeting that we say, hey, if you want to do this, be aware that we're going to ask you for a survey because we want to, we, we value trees in our community, right? Second thing is, I think the, I think the way that we're, we're asking is, it doesn't matter if there's 35 people that own it. The, the guy that's responsible is the guy that's coming to the conceptual, right? Not even the P two, it's, you owe us this when you're going to develop this commercially. And we come to the.
So now I'm going to be penalized as a, now I'm not really, and as I said, I'm not huge on the developer side of things. Like I said, they're smart, they'll figure it out. But you're saying that if I'm the developer and you bought the property from him and he bought the property from him. I'm now being penalized or something have to come up with these tree credits because.
Buy cut the trees though.
Because three owners ago bought it or sold it or did it, I'm sorry.
I would say shame on you for spending a lot of money and not know what you're doing.
Okay.
Right?
Well, that's what I said, the developers probably wouldn't do that.
Well, let me put a little twist on it. It might not be that if somebody did that and it's already clear cut and it changes hands and everything, no. The person buying it now is going to come in and be like, man, I'm going to have to spend $500,000 in berms and mulch and pines and trees and. I could have got away without doing all of that had there been a natural buffer going around the property and there'd be no cost to that. All you'd have to do is throw some street trees in and call it good. So you, you know, you, I keep going back to people thinking that the property is less valuable because it's been clear cut. And I don't necessarily believe that, that that is, would always be the case.
No, I'm just saying.
The topography would also be a factor in that too, whether that would make sense to do such a thing, but. So it could be a detriment to the guy buying it going, man, I wish it wouldn't have been clear cut because I could have negotiated this density and canopy and qualified for the PUD. And given the township something and now I'm buying a piece of raw land. And I don't really have, I'm going to have to put in a clubhouse or a playground or, I can't use trees as the mechanism to qualify for the PUD or the cluster. I'm going to have to actually spend money like, you know, Parks of Stonewood when they did the PUD and they put in a pool house and they put in playgrounds in the neighborhoods. Like they, they had to buy the community amenities. And we're saying is, we look at the trees as a community amenity and if you leave them, there's a, there's, you will reap the rewards of the, of letting us use them to. To preserve the character of the community. So that's just, doesn't mean it's, you know, making less money.
Alex, not Jason's thing, shame on the developer for not doing their research.
I mean, I think they should, they would, they would know.
We don't want to surprise them.
Can I get Dick up or Megan, whoever, what you, everyone if you real quick? Either one, either one. In here with all the, the ordinances that we have. Excluding the, I'm going to go buy a piece of property, clear cut it today, then come in to whether it's the P two or the pre-con or whatever. Do we have tools in place right now that the planning commission has? That if you're dealing with, let's just say 90%, 80% of the developers, that they have the tools already to manage the, the clear cut potential?
Do we have the tools to manage the clear cut potential?
Right. So if I'm, you know, like for 80% of the developers that come in here, I'm sure there are bad actors for sure, right? There's bad actors in everything.
Well, I mean, if, I think if you, if you assume that 80% of the developers are, you know, all of good intention. Or 90% or whatever you want to say, you know, yeah, you have the tools during site plan approval.
Okay.
But let me also say that I think. You know, given what the objectives are of the planning commission. There are, there is language that we could include in our ordinance. That would incentivize the preservation of trees to meet landscape requirements. So what I'm saying is, is that our landscape requirements could well be beefed up. By giving more credit to, for the preservation of existing trees. And that would be a tool that would give the planning commission more ability to preserve trees. I mean, without a tree preservation ordinance. There are, there are several areas of the ordinance that I think could be, could be strengthened. To better encourage the use of existing vegetation to meet some of our requirements. I think that's a fair statement. I will say that many of the examples that existed and I think Mr. Ferris, I mentioned that to you today. That, that served as good examples of what people like in terms of the type of development. Mr. Lomire, I believe, was on the planning commission, of course Sam was too, was when we had cluster development or cluster developments. Under our cluster provisions in the north, particularly in the northeast part of the township. There we have very eclectic zoning and allowing cluster development up there has, did a lot to preserve. Natural tree cover and, and buffers in those areas. And, and what that, and what that addressed is the fact that lot size was an issue in terms of tree preservation. When we allowed the lot sizes to be reduced without increasing density. We were then incentivizing the developer to cluster the development. In the centralized portion or in portions of that site that allowed the perimeter buffers and the significant tree cover to be replaced. So that's another area that if clustering was a by right rather than a special land use. You might get more interest in resurrecting the use of those provisions of the ordinance. So those are, those are a couple of areas that I would say that an absence of a tree preservation ordinance. Would be beneficial to achieve what you're trying to achieve. And that is strengthening our landscape requirements and taking another look at our cluster provisions to make it a by right type of approach.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Brown?
I'm sorry, Treasurer Brown?
I, I answered either one, so it's fine.
It's a T, T Brown.
So on the, on the development across the street. Have they met what the planning commission outlined for the, for the trees? And I don't believe that thing was treat, was clear cut. That was before, they were talking with the planning commission a long time before they started bringing equipment in there. Is that, is that accurate, Sam? Across the street, you were on the planning commission.
Before they started clearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Went through a lot of reiterations.
They did a lot of stuff without ever clearing it. And so, and I, because I know a lot of people were unhappy when they came in and clear cut that property to start the development. And yet, the entire thing had been approved unanimously by the planning commission.
That's the point.
And so, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And, and so. Having a tree ordinance in place, they didn't cut anything down until they came before the planning commission. And so if we had utilized bigger buffer things and, and those other tools that he just mentioned. And site plan stuff where you can move things around, then that could have all been done without the tree ordinance because we don't have one. But it passed, again, it passed unanimously from the planning commission and then they went and cut trees down. I just want to make it clear that they didn't go in there and clear cut things that everyone didn't already know that was going to happen who sat on these boards and committees. We all knew that was going to happen based on what was approved. So again, I'm just, that, that's been a very contentious thing.
Yeah.
And, but I, there's some context to that. It all got approved before they did what they did. So.
I was on that and I think the whole argument with that was that it just could have been done way better. It just could have been done a lot better. The buffering could have been a lot better. And by having some protections and guidelines, which we don't have is kind of the concern. Because you have planning commissions who don't do a great job. They didn't do a great job over there. I was on it. We didn't do a good job. It started off with a 16 acre, a 17 acre park in the middle is what was proposed when it came into the PUD. And we negotiated it down to nine acres by the highway. So we drove that, we helped drive that project to expose us to the expressway, to expose us to the noise, to eliminate woodlands. That was all done by the planning commission, you know, and that's a concern because you have different members, different commissions, different township boards, all these people coming and going. We don't, you know, the more standardized limit of, and tools, I think is what, is what I've always been fighting for, is that we don't have that. So you can have a planning commission that's lax days because the recession was down. We were anxious to get whatever construction we could get. We just went, you know, oh six and oh eight, everybody went through it. It was like build, build, build. And we, we just didn't do a good job of designing that PUD. It could have just been way better than it was, you know. And, you know, I think that you got to have with this, different appointments and people, we got to get our baseline up as, in my opinion, to them, to, to get the standards raised. So that it's not so willy nilly. But the PUD, I think Dick and Megan, you would agree that that gives you the flexibility to deviate from all. Even this ordinance, if someone comes, if we approve this tree ordinance and if someone comes in with a PUD, that we, they have, we have the ability, the planning commission's ability. To just ignore everything that we just passed and negotiate out the job. Is that, that's how the PUD works, so.
If it's a zoning ordinance requirement, that would be correct. If it were a standalone ordinance, you would have less ability under a PUD to deviate from the general ordinance.
These would give us stronger guidelines if it wasn't. These would give us stronger guidelines if it wasn't a PUD and all other development other than that.
Well, I'm assuming we're still talking about the first part because we haven't gotten to the second part yet. But, yeah, I mean, I mean, having better information would be a benefit to being able to better identify those areas that are worthy of preservation, even under any, a conventional process, whether it's a PUD or not.
Trustee Matthew.
I was gonna bring that up, so I'm glad you did, that the thing across the street that everyone's so upset at was like 20 years ago. So, that's why I think we're 20 years too late and one bad decision in my mind doesn't penalize everybody else who owns something that's left to develop. I forgot my third point. Oh, and like Sam said, one, the commission could still ignore it. Two, a couple years from now, when people have turnover or there's another new board, they can come up and change this whole thing anyway. So, it is, you know, people that are appointed and elected and at the time, if something goes wrong, those are the people who have to answer for it and that's how this government works. So, putting this, you know, two years from now, it could all change, it could come back different, it could be amended again, it could be, you know, a whole different thing voted on. So, if we have tools right now for people to follow in a back and forth discussion in your landscape rules that can govern now what we're trying to keep in this community, I think that's enough and I think this is unnecessary.
Although maybe we shouldn't have any ordinances anymore then because they could all be changed.
Correct.
So, let's just stop ordinances altogether. Why, why bring any more to the board? Because they're just gonna get changed somewhere down the road.
They could.
Well, of course they could and they can be added to, but that's why we're here. I can tell you, if you put this, what if we, if we could take this ordinance, both parts of it, the whole thing, and put it on a ballot, do you think the township, the residents of this township would pass it?
I don't, yeah.
I know they would.
I look at the feedback and comments online and I don't see it. I see a very small little group that's very active and they're engaged, which is great, but I don't hear a big outcry.
Well.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to answer that question because I don't know if we've officially been able to go out and do some data.
I can just tell you my personal experience in, in, again, campaigning because I went to every single area as much as I could in, in four or five months. And I can tell you almost, almost every single person I talked to complained about the development and how we are tearing down all the trees in this township. And it's just not, just because a couple people show up here, I'm telling you, every door I knocked on, almost every single person was not happy with the destruction of the trees. I moved here because I wanted away from Troy. I moved here because, and your guys are turning this into Rochester Hills, you're turning it into Troy, that's all I heard. And it's not from a couple of people. I went out and talked to everybody. And I, in fact, I started in her neighborhood first. Oakhurst was the first place I went and those people were telling me the same thing. And they believed that the, the development and the trees getting torn down is contributing to the congestion. Of course it is because we're adding more houses, we're adding more residents, but that's all I have to say.
Okay. Trustee Matthew.
Well, and I don't think you were called on, so this, in the middle of speaking supervisor calls, even though it's a discussion.
We were told it was only a discussion, but that's all.
Secondly, I don't, I don't know what, just because I live in a certain neighborhood, that has anything to do with it, but that's not a valid point. And I ran as a Republican and in my eyes, a Republican is for less government. I'm gonna stand by that. And a quote from George Washington that I brought up for today, freedom and property rights are inseparable. You can't have one without the other. So, we can have this discussion, but no matter what comes back, if we have tools already in place to put things in place and obviously even trustee Morocco said that it was the fault of the people on the planning commission at that time that what happened across the street happened, but we did have things in place that if the people sitting on your side of the table took more interest or more discussion into putting on paper or in the rules what they wanted at the time, it could've looked different. And that's just my stance on this, so.
We've had a couple runs up here, so how about back on the planning commission?
My answer to the, the things that the commission on, in place at the time that Walden was done, had the tools, they didn't enforce. That's why the ordinance needs to be tougher. And to me, it just exemplifies that point. They had the tools. Because it was a PUD, those tools need to be enhanced.
I think we kind of accomplished part of what I said at the beginning, right? To get an understanding, do we think we want to do something? I think generally, you know, altruistically, everybody would like to protect their trees as much as possible, right? We've come down to the next level, which is, is a zoning, is an ordinance change necessary? And that's where I think we haven't changed many hearts and minds of where we came in here, right? So, personally, I'm kind of taken away from this unless there's a surprise up there. We should really work on beefing up the tools that we have. But Dick mentioned, there's some things that we could do a little bit better, put a little bit more meat behind what a developer can expect. So, if there's more incentive that, hey, I can use existing vegetation to, to support this, I can perhaps have a little bit more liberal use of clustering. Because I remember when we had to do the cluster option, as we were talking earlier and you had, a developer would put out, here's what I would do under digital, here's what I would do under cluster. It was great for the audience, members would come out and they're like, this really makes it look so much more attractive, really preserves the trees, really keeps the density but leaves so much of the land. I've kind of the approach, we shouldn't wait to do those things. Probably the, the argument on whether we needed tree preservation ordinance will go on, but there's no reason we can't continue to try and beef up the tools that we have. But, I, I'm not sensing that everybody's become, you know, swept up in the, the joy that is the street ordinance. So, that may just be me guys, that's how I'm reading the audience here.
I just have one more comment based on what Mr. Scarborough just said. Putting the ordinance there isn't gonna change it either because depending who's behind that desk, it says right here, there's, this requirement may be waived by the planning commission in those instances. And even Mr. Morocco said that, hey, we could just say it doesn't matter for this one. So, yes, everybody behind the table, it's gonna, whether you have it in place or not, they could still say it's not necessary for this property.
Mr. Supervisor, can we at least, can we get back to the, the first ordinance where we have the, you know, where we have the tools? Until we get a board that wants to preserve trees, I think we should at least work on phase one of, like, the tools the planning commission needs to do it? Or are we shut down on, as the, as the board's flavor that we're not gonna give the planning commission any more tools to work with either? And we're just gonna do nothing? Is that, because we got two different issues we're talking about. We haven't got past the first one yet, which is the, is the procedural. You know, that doesn't affect property rights and whatever other, whatever other things were said today that, you know, on the other side.
Treasurer Brown.
I'll just remind everyone that while we voted down moving forward with the tree ordinance, we're the same ones who said, let's do this, this session. This was, this was, you know, I brought this up, the supervisor brought this up, to have this joint session. Clearly, we want to protect trees or we just would've kept our mouth shut, there wouldn't have been another meeting. And so, that's really, to say that's, it's just, it doesn't match with the facts. We voted yes to have this meeting and it was our idea. So, clearly, we want to protect trees, I do, I brought that up. I'm trying to protect these on my property, cutting vines down, it's hurting my back. My back's better now, thank you. And, and so, to me, more of that with the residents and helping them learn how to protect the trees they already have on their property is a great step, but more tools for you is something that can, I think, be supported by this board totally. And it doesn't mean a tree ordinance couldn't come up again down the road. I see no reason not to move forward with those kind of ideas that were brought up.
Thank you. I've been doing a lot of listening tonight. I think that was the intent behind this. Unfortunately, I think everyone's leaving just where they started and perhaps even further away, but the one thing that is loud and clear to me, and I've done my best to listen to the planning commission and watch the videos and listen to our consultants and my understanding, this is, this is a 20-year-old discussion or fight in the township. So, this is not new, right? It's just been different iterations of where we are as a township. I think I heard earlier, Mr. Carlyle say that there's a lot of, I think the first, one of the first words you said is a lot of gray area in the application of the tools, if you will, that the planning commission does have right now. I've also heard that the planning commission would like to apply said tools at the conceptual level rather at a later phase, which is in the best interest of the applicant, of the developer, and the best interest of the, of the community. So, whether it's, it's, it's pretty clear the direction where we're going based on tonight's discussion, but I think it behooves the board to, at the very least, give our planning commission what they're asking for. And that is a more even, even-handed application of the tools they do have and perhaps a discussion if, if there are some tools regarding buffer zones or whatever the other pieces in play here. And to do that, to do that as expeditiously as possible and of course, whether it's a township board, it's a congressperson, it's a, it's a planning commissioner, people can be lazy on the job. But, the more, the more clearly defined we make these rules and apply these rules, the less latitude there is. And I think that's what this planning commission in 7-0 fashion is asking for. And I know some people are, hearts are set more on a quote unquote tree ordinance than others. I thought you did your homework, I supported what was presented, I hold a minority viewpoint, you know, on the board and that's fine, I respect that. So, I think we really need to walk away tonight and to work on to the extent we're able to give this planning commission what they're asking for and that is more authority earlier in the process, which is in the best interest of the community and it's the best interest of the developer. I also think it's really important that we have an even and common application of residential because I've heard reluctance, well, I don't want this to impact residential. Well, again, once a residential property has, and so, a developer has to buy said property with the plans of developing it, which requires a site plan, it's then, it's really, certainly in my eyes, I don't consider it a quote unquote residential property in, in terms of what we're thinking with respect to our own properties. So, and the irony in a lot of, if not all of these developments, and I'm not a developer, so I'm speaking from the outside looking in, having bought and sold homes throughout my life, these developments, these site condo developments tend to be among the most restrictive places you could opt to live. And, you know, whether it's parking your car in the street at night, putting an RV in your driveway, putting a boat in your driveway, the list goes on and on and on. Anyone that lives within the confines of an HOA knows those all too well. And so, there's an argument that, you know, and maybe there's, I'm sure state statute that enables said HOAs and these types of developments to, of course, exist, but I don't think you can assert on one side free, you know, property rights at all costs, but then, by the way, those that actually make said developer handsomely wealthy are placing very strict impositions on those very properties. So, just, just a thought there, but I think I would encourage the board, all of us, to maybe talk with our planning commissioners and our consultants and find out what is it exactly that we can all agree on that gives our planning commission the tools they need at an earlier phase so that they can do right by our developers and do right by residents.
Billy.
I would like to say that I believe in individual property rights and I'm a proponent of that. I appreciate Treasurer Brown showing us the aerial of the property on Fleming's Lake Road because it did look like that was clear 19 years ago. And most likely what they cut down, I mean, I'm sure native trees could've grown, but I'm, I'm sure most of it was probably invasives is my guess because they're everywhere. Independence Township is covered up with invasives. And in fact, they will even kill monument trees if they're not controlled. The state of Michigan has a grant for people to remove invasives. So, in my mind, invasives are a huge problem, especially if you love trees because they'll kill the good trees. But, I would like to see, and I don't think this would be too much to ask of a developer, especially if we only have seven parcels left, I would like to see a tree inventory at the conceptual site plan stage. I don't think that's too much to ask. I don't think they're terribly expensive, maybe I'm wrong, but if we had that tree inventory, at least it gives us some talking points and, you know, if you don't have the inventory going in, it's a little bit hard to define, you know, well, if you'll do this, we can do this or some give and take with the developers. So, I would really like to see the tree inventory be required.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the planning commission? Sam, I don't, I'm not sure, are you, did you anticipate tonight that there would be some action taken because that wasn't part of the agenda here? The way you were talking, I wasn't sure.
Well, I, I was hoping that at a minimum that we would get a consensus that we could bring back the procedural part of the ordinance proposal that Carl and Mortman put together for the planning commission at a future meeting with confidence that we would at least get that through would be, I think, would be everyone's hope from today that we could get now. If you guys, if don't want to do a tree ordinance, we'll do it, we'll do it, do it in the future. You know, we'll try it again with the next, after the next election. But, I think that, but you're, you know, to hinder the planning commission with these tools because developers gotta spend money, I, I think is, that's, to me, that's just, that's just absurd. As a duty of us looking out for the residents in the community, I think that's irresponsible to think that because we lay the law down on all sorts of other things that cost people all sorts of money. So, all we're saying is, there's all these professionals with the consultants saying this would make it better, this would help you if you had this. And I was hoping that maybe we could get to a, at least get, get something, something out of it because I think the election was, had a lot to do with what happened across the street with showing that we're for something, that we're doing something to prevent that. So, if that's not the case, it's not the case. But, yes, I did hope that we could at least, I was hoping that we'd be able to convince one more person to go with it is what I was hoping. But, I haven't heard from Carrie yet, so maybe she's the split vote, I don't know.
Are we able to move forward with one or the other and not a full package? I am not opposed at all at giving the planning commission the tools that they need. I sat on the board as a new clerk, been in a clerk's, clerk's office for many years, but as a new clerk, when the project across the street came to me after it had been to the planning commission, so I had to rely on the planning commission, not knowing, that was before I took citizen planner classes, that was before I knew fellow board members, I had a trust level. And, so I had to depend then on the planning commission to do their job to bring me, we, the board, the best package that they could bring. I'm not gonna say that someone didn't do a good job, I'm not gonna point fingers, but we got what we got. I do remember though that the board was very involved with some help of Sam, back and forth with, and I learned a lot. It was, it was a great learning experience. I'm not totally dissatisfied with the project across the street. Could it be better? Yes. How do we make, how do we make our future better is by giving the planning commission the tools that they need. I am not going to keep anyone from having the tools that they need, but I'm only concerned with commercial at this point. If that can be in some other fashion as a design standard, some other appropriate measure, I'm not against or opposed to that. Earlier on in the process, so you have hands and eyes on things before it gets to conceptual or preliminary, I, I'm not, you know, certain all of your steps. I'm not against that whatsoever. But, is it a stopping point, does it have to be all or nothing between the planning commission and the But is it a stopping point? Does it have to be all or nothing between the Planning Commission and the board? Or can we find a happy medium to begin that process to at least secure the seven, the seven parcels? I mean, we could still lose one out of the seven and be what everyone talks about is a monstrosity is across the street. I want us to do better. I want you to have the tools so that you're better equipped for what comes to me to vote on, should that come in the next few years. But right now, you're not going to move me on the residential. So that's where I'm at. Be happy to work with you and to improve your processes going forward for commercial. But if it's all or nothing, that's where I'm at.
So I'm just going to make a point here is that, what, again, my thing has been protecting residential, the commercial, you know, I've been, I've said it many times, I'll keep saying it. My concern, though, is still, even if we give the Planning Commission this tool, they have tools they're not using now. So what's going to make that work? You know, and that's really kind of still the concern. I hate the idea of coming up with new rules because you couldn't follow the rules you have or you couldn't enforce the rules that you have. And I don't mean, obviously, you guys, because you guys are all pretty much new here. But that's still, the concern is that, are we just creating it to make us as this group here feel good that we have it? But the next group can come in and say, "Nope, we can go around it by doing this," or "Nope, I'm not going to do this." Or, you know, maybe they're really pro-development because five years from now, we don't have enough money coming in, so, because we don't have enough commercial development, so now we're going to be taxing the crap out of the residents. And everybody knows that's a bad thing to do. So now we're going to try to figure out a way to get around all these little rules and everything else that we've already put in place, ordinances. I mean, you know, so that's still an issue with me. I'm like, why, I mean, literally on the books, there's still a thing that says women can't get their haircuts unless the men say it's okay. The husbands say it's okay. That's still sitting on the Michigan books from like 18-something. And somebody's going to look it up about data, and I'm sure, I'm sure I'm going to hear about that. But I believe that's still on the books. So again, you know, why create new tools if we're not fully implementing the tools we have already? And this ordinance here, much like Carrie's saying, if it goes to the residential, I'm not for it. If we can figure out how to do it on the commercial side, yes, I, I would be for something along those lines. You know, that's why I'm thinking, you know, maybe take a look at some of these other beefing up the buffer zones or the green belts or coming up with an overlay. I don't know exactly, but, you know, if we can go that route, I would be much, much, much more inclined to move forward. I don't want to hinder the Planning Commission, but I also would like to know that you're using all the tools you have.
Carrie's pointing the finger.
Yep.
Maybe this is for Dick. Is there one mechanism that is more useful and enforceable than another as a tool for that case?
Anything within the context of a site plan approval is the most enforceable process that you have, okay? What I'm struck by as an observation is everything is always, you know, is in context. And because it was all presented in this manner, the context of better information for the Planning Commission is being presented in the context of tree preservation provisions of the ordinance. And that's how this is being viewed. So if we took that off the table and said, "This tree preservation information is necessary to beef up our landscaping requirements," we all may look at this differently. And that, for me, from my perspective, is if, if, for example, and I will tell you, I mean, I'm the author of the landscaping provisions of the ordinance. And I look at it now and I'm saying, "I think there are things we can do with it." I think there are some things that could improve it. Things that I've learned working with other communities, things that Megan and others in my firm have learned from what others have done. So when you put it in the context of improving the existing tools we have, then it takes on a whole different light. And I've never seen, you know, this board and these commissions ever not come up with good solutions to problems in my 40 years here. And I see that as a great potential right here. But I think if we put it in the context of improving the tools, it's all being thought of now in terms of the context of tree, a tree preservation ordinance. And actually, it might be, it will be necessary, perhaps, if we change the landscape ordinance to make, to incentivize tree preservation in a greater manner, yes.
Newbeck?
In that aspect, though, is it, would it be considered, or when you've done them in the past for other places, as more of a mandate and not a recommendation, where it could vary amongst the planning commissioners? Would things come through as mandates and strict provisions versus a recommendation where...
I think when you have any kind of provisions like this, you've got to build in flexibility into the application of the ordinance. And I don't look at that as treating people differently. I, I look at it as looking at conditions on the site and being able to interpret your ordinance to apply it to that situation in the most pragmatic manner. I mean, there's no two sites in this township that are identical. And so, you know, I, I think that, you know, I think that a properly crafted ordinance has to have some room for interpretation and application. This is why you have seven planning commissioners up there that are trying to look at the best interest of the community as a whole.
Okay, I'm just wondering, is it, is it going to be a useful tool or is it a tool that can be varied by commissioner?
No.
And what their objective is and what their background is at the time? Is it something that's going to be...
Well, as it is now, it can be. I mean, I think when you, I mean, the more that you, the more that you refine ordinance requirements, the less room there is for interpretation. Now, I don't know if that's what you want to see happen here or not. I, I trust in the judgment of this community in general, you know? I mean, this community has always shown great judgment in the application of its ordinances. I, I would say that this is one of these kind of circumstances where it's a wait-and-see. Wait and see how this is placed in the context of revisions to the other ordinances that are already on the books that will be strengthened by requiring better information.
What does the Planning Commissioners think of that?
Thank you. One second. Treasure Brown?
I just had one other thought, and this probably relates to trying to communicate with a fairly small number of people that own property that we're talking about. I suppose, I mean, if we went and looked at the numbers for how many lots there are in the commercial and how many lots there are in residential that are, say, over 20 acres, we might be talking a couple dozen people. And it seems to me that, that there would be a lot of support from the commission and this board to do some type of resolution that expresses our desire to maintain trees to whatever level we can and to give some preference to people that want to bring projects that have not cut down the trees so that we can work together to benefit them and maintain the trees. Because if they know we want to do that without trying to bring a hammer down on them to say we're going to make them do it, there's going to be value in it. If there's fear for these people that we're going to come out here with something, it could go in the other direction. And I would 100% support some kind of a joint resolution that we can share with developers and say, "We want to find a way to preserve the trees by working with you before you cut anything down."
Treasure Brown? There's been some context about why the Planning Commission didn't require a tree inventory across the street. Why, we have the tools. Why didn't they enforce it? I don't know why. Like I said, I've looked at every site plan application. There's no discussion in there on why we don't have a tree inventory. But the problem could be hypothetically that we had no tool to require it at conceptual. So we had nothing to enforce. And by the time it got to final, it was too late. So let's eliminate that possibility.
Question.
I think that we're talking about $15,000, $20,000 that we're asking a developer to spend, okay, on a tree inventory. You know, we're literally down to that, you know, is the majority of the board willing to accept that there's a cost for coming here and profiting from us, from a developer? We're not, you know? And we're talking pennies on the dollar compared to a development. And we're literally spending hours arguing over whether or not we should make someone who's coming here to make millions spend $15,000 or $20,000 on a tree ordinance. So we would have the ability to identify the trees, the canopy, the buffering, the benefits, you know, the animal movements and all of that stuff. That's why, I know it's hard to tell, but sometimes I get frustrated, you know? Because to me, it's ridiculous. It's literally ridiculous what we're talking about when it comes to us, seven people tasked with protecting the residents' development, two consultants, board members, all saying, "Hey, we need this. It should be a no-brainer. No problem. Here you go. Hope it works for you." Now, if you want to talk about penalties and trees and, you know, and developers' profits driving our decisions, that's a different story. But I think this first ordinance, this procedural ordinance, this thing that we're, the tools we're asking for, if, there is no argument. There's no, I haven't heard a single thing that would make any sense why we wouldn't give us the tools that we're asking for, because it costs us nothing and it could save us a lot. And it could also make us a more valuable and prosperous community because we were able to use those tools to create and drive better developments with, with the people. So, I don't, you know, I haven't heard any reason why we wouldn't just assume that that would go through, but that's, I, I, I don't, that's my opinion. It's just, it's, it's not very much money. It's not our money. It doesn't cost us any money. It's, it's, seems like a smart thing to do.
So we've been at this for two hours now, and I feel like everybody's kind of heard what they wanted to hear. What I would like to do is just maybe go once, just give every single person an opportunity to make one last comment or anything. If you don't want to, just say, "Nope, I'm good," and we'll just work our way around. So, I'll start with you, Ron.
All right. Okay, I held back a couple of my comments. We talked about previous, since I've been on the Planning Commission for a few years, I'll take credit of having some input on some of the properties we talked about. By looking at like Northridge, it came up a number of times. When, when Northridge was coming in and working to be developed, the residents around there, like in Pine Knob subdivision, railed against it. They were, they were totally against it, cutting the trees, all that type of stuff. And we didn't have an inventory for that property, but we did have canopies that we tried to preserve. And that's what we looked at. And I guess that's what I was getting, talking to you about, Bill, was in the past, we've, we've tried to identify tree canopies that we want to keep as a buffer and everything, but we didn't necessarily have a tree inventory there. But, but we also, you know, our landscape requirements, you know, I think are quite good. And when, when Northridge got clear-cut, everybody just thought that was the most shocking thing ever. And obviously, that's not nearly the size of it is across the street. So you take that shock, multiply it by five or six times across the street, you know, you're looking at, when it's clear-cut, that's, you know, it's the worst-case scenario. You're looking at the ugliest it can be, so. But I look, I guess I'd like to bring up Northridge, like, after it's complete and after you get a couple of years of growth, it, it is, doesn't look bad. It, you know, to me, it's a very nice development. And I think across the street, it's still too early to pass judgment on whether it's good or bad. So I think what we did over there has a lot of good. Could it be better? I look at every development we worked on. Could it be better? Yes. And I could go through each one and name one or two things that was, I would have done this a little bit different, whatever. But, but I think across the street, when it's finished and you have a year or two of growth on everything, it's, it's going to be a much more palatable development, so. But I, see, I was, I guess I kind of railed against the tree ordinance as far as the inventory, because I think that's erroneous. I think it still could be covered by having, talk about canopy, and if there's some landmark trees that we want to point out. There's only been one or two times where I think we pointed out there's a landmark tree. You know, "Hey, is there a way to save that?" And one of those was in Ardmore, backing up to Wingate. There was a couple of trees there that were outside of the canopy area. We said, "Hey, we want to preserve that tree," and developer did that. And I think the Wingate people were very happy that, you know, we kept as much buffer as we could between their subdivision and Ardmore, so. So I think, you know, I'm in favor of saving trees when we can, but I guess I'd just like to do it in the most expeditious way possible, so.
So I just want to thank the board for meeting with us, because I think it's a great show of all of our cooperation. We don't, clearly, we don't always agree with every detail, but I appreciate all the feedback. I think we're all fighting for the same thing, and that's to keep our township as good as we can, as beautiful as it can be. I do think that part A, I guess, of the first ordinance, part A, you know, is probably a good idea. Bringing us information, the earlier the better. I think it would save us some time going back and forth with the developers, and I think it would save the developers money. And it would probably, you know, put an expectation on them that, that how much the, you know, trees and natural buffers really mean for our design in our community, so, yeah.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you for doing this. Maybe we need to do it more often on other topics. I think the first step, the site plan submission process is needed so we have the information that we need to make better decisions. If that's all we get, we'll be lacking any penalties or anything like that. And, you know, I'm taking it a step, step at a time. I'm willing to personally consider some kind of other thing that beefs up our landscaping requirements and provides incentives for tree preservations. I'm willing to consider that.
Just to close out, I would say, I may be the majority, but I'm pretty happy with the discussion tonight. I kind of said it upfront. I thought us, but Lincoln Census was kind of the goal. And I think we understand where everybody's coming from. My mission was, was never, "Hey, let's get our ordinance approved no matter what." It's, can we move ourselves in a direction what we all want? I think we all kind of said we want the same thing. We all love it when we see development come in, it's successful, and you can look at that site later, whether it's commercial or residential home development, and say, "I don't think we could have done any better than that. That's what we all want." As a Planning Commission, you kind of beam with Brian, and then happens as a board you do as well. So I think we saw an opportunity to do better here. I think we've kind of moved in a direction that is, is going to give us some more tools. We can look, I love Dick's suggestion. I love the idea of the context, right? We're moving away from a stick and a lot more to carrots, right? Can we incentivize the developers to do, how can we get them to bring us this stuff early on? I like that idea. You know, if it doesn't work, but we're still unhappy, there's always, you know, you can always revisit the topic. But to me, this was never a, "We got to have this or else" type of thing. It's like, how can we work together to make sure we don't have the same mistakes we've had in the past? And we can point at the one across the street, even point at other things and say, "How do we not do that again?" Part of it's, the rule's part of its diligence, right? Just, you know, sometimes committees make mistakes the same way people do. So I'm excited about moving forward. I thought this was a really healthy discussion, and I appreciate also the board hosting.
I also appreciate the discussions tonight, and I would say I support a tree survey at the conceptual site plan review stage. I believe some type of clear picture and control at the conceptual site plan stage allows incentives to encourage tree preservation.
I won't spend any time convincing you that I don't know anything about trees other than that oak trees, acorns, chipmunks pick, pick up acorns, take them to my garage, store them in my car, that I know. But better information, this goes back to my entire career, actually. Better information allows, allows, doesn't necessarily guarantee better decisions to be made. That's a given. That's a given. So the earlier that the planning commission could get information on which to make a decision, the better they can be, the better they should be, the better that you should expect them to be. Expectations should be high. So given that, I think we got a lot of good information tonight, you know, which is not on getting information to the planning commission, you know, early meetings, it's information that we can use to move forward on where we want to go. So thank you for that, because, you know, I find information gathering pretty valuable. Without it, you don't make good decisions on anything.
I would like to say that I do appreciate us getting together. We're kind of in the same situation as, you know, a developer at the end of the thing now saying, well, here's all the trees that I didn't plant, or whatever, because I think this ended up being of trying to make people change their minds. And I know we talked earlier, when we first started this new board, about meeting more with you, and I think that it would be more advantageous to meet with you when something's in an idea form, rather than here it's already written up, would you guys want to pass it now? You know what I mean? So that way, we can, we're both, not re, some of us have already made up our minds, some of us haven't. But to, to the point, I guess, where we're meeting about any ideas that you have or that we have, before we get to this place to where it's already been on the, we've talked about it twice on the board now, and we're back here and doing it again. So I just do like the opportunity of us being together, but hopefully, the, the next time, it's a little more earlier on in the process than it is now, so.
I agree with Trustee Hayward on the timing issue. Along with you guys getting your information early from developers and stuff, I think that's huge, and same with us. If we can have work sessions ahead of time, I think it saves a lot of time, because, well, our meetings are twice a month unless you call a special one. So it's the back and forth, it's the waiting. Nobody likes that in government either, and I think, you know, if people are open to this once in a while, when there's a big project to talk about, I think it's great. I think everybody's comments here were valued one way or another by somebody. We saw your side of the table, you saw ours, where a lot of times, it's just hearing stuff from Mr. Carlyle about what happened with you, and then we try and reiterate, we're watching your meetings, but we're not there to ask the questions sometimes, and vice versa. So I think this was great, and I, I do like what, what are you now, chairman? I don't know what your commissioner, Richie, I don't know what your titles are, I'm sorry, but I, I like how, you know, you've been at it a long time, and I trusted your opinion at the process, because when I came on, like Clerk Newbeck, you were the one that was here for a while. I knew you were on both, I trust a lot. We've had conversations on things, and I appreciate how you're willing to have Mr. Carlyle look at what we've already had in place to maybe do better on it. I like your canopy idea, but I do also support you guys getting your information earlier from developers. I think that's helpful. So thank you.
Clerk Newbeck.
I too appreciate our joint meeting. This is the second one that I've had since we've been on board. We had the pre-master plan meeting. Some of you weren't on the commission at the time, and I thought that was a great meeting as well. Do look forward to having more. I think some time has gone by and some emotion has come out of, I think, both sides, and I think we were able to be constructive in our discussions. Did I learn some today? Yes, I did. Hopefully, so did you. Looking forward to where we can go with this. I don't think it's a dead issue, and I'm looking forward to what's to come Mr. Carlyle with you can bring forward so that we can meet on our middle ground, if there is some middle ground. Hoping so, that's what we're here for, and I think this is just the beginning of our partnership as we continue to move forward with projects and other ordinances and things going forward. So I think it's important that this is a solid foundation, it's something that we can work from, and we as a board can also grow from it as well. So I appreciate tonight and all of your comments.
I'd be repeating, I think, what everyone's kind of saying, and that's that there's some common ground for us. Everyone's not gonna be happy, but there is a way to, I, I think, for us to all come out of this with something that's gonna help us preserve trees, and, and I'm, I'm prepared to support some of those ideas to give you additional tools.
I'm disappointed that profits of friends and developers has, you know, shut this thing down, but I've been on it for a couple decades, I'll keep fighting till we get some people that'll do what's right.
Trustee Carter.
Echo many comments. It's great to have these opportunities to get together, flesh this out in person. I do think there's some ground that's been gained perhaps tonight. I do think there's a compelling argument to get our planning commission more of these procedural tools and to do so sooner rather than later. There's always a risk lazy board members, lazy planning commissions of the future, that, that shouldn't stop us from instituting objective, clear criteria that gives them more tools at the conceptual level, and it's, I think, something that's definitely worth, worth considering. So with that, thank you, everyone.
I want to thank everybody, too. This is, but obviously, a learning for me, I'm new to this position, and it's an opportunity for, I think, all of us to get together and understand, there's a lot of new members on the board here, too, as well. So I think from that standpoint, it's great. I would like to make sure that we can still keep a high level of communication, whether it's timing, getting it earlier, or maybe have a little bit more of the history and the context. I do believe that things did move. The needle did move. We will come up with something. I believe that firmly now that we will be able to come together and come up with something. Will it be all the way to the end that some of you want? No, but it'd be a lot further than where it was, you know, prior, probably even before this meeting started. So I think we're gonna be able to make some movement there on that side of things. My only concern would be is timing. I do believe that timing is of the essence. We need to move faster than probably what we have to this point, but I think we're at a point now where we can probably, and I think if, you know, if you listen to the round robin here, that there's enough consensus, probably, based on what I've heard at least, to be able to start moving on some of this. So I know you guys have a meeting on Thursday. I would strongly encourage you to take that first phase, A, or whatever the procedural side of it, get that, try to get that built up as fast as possible, and try to get it back to the board. And at least, let's try to get something going on that side of things. But again, I appreciate everybody and everything you're doing, and hopefully, we'll, this will be the beginning of what can be a much better relationship and communication. At this point, I would like a motion to, where are we at?
Newbuck, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? motion, Carrie. Thank you.